The hour of 6:00 PM having arrived, I will call to order this regular meeting of the Planning Board. This meeting is being broadcast live on the City of Keene YouTube channel. The video was also streamed on the city's website and is posted on the website by the end of the next business day, barring any technical difficulties. Anyone wishing to view a copy of the agenda and supporting materials will find it on the city website. To receive electronic copies of future agenda packets, please go to the homepage and subscribe to the city meetings email list. The public and other board members will be recognized to ask questions and make comments on the agenda item under discussion. After being recognized, all remarks are to be made through the chair. Will staff please conduct the roll?
Harold Farrington, Roberta Mastro Giovanni.
Present.
Mayor Khan. Councillor Mike Remmy. Sarah Vazani. Ryan Clancy.
Here.
Kenneth Cost.
Here.
Armando Rangel.
Here.
And for alternates Stefan Mayhew.
Present.
And I'm sorry Stefan, is that how I say your last name?
Stefan Mayhew.
Stefan Mayhew, okay. And Brandon Markelon.
Here.
Tammy Adams. And Michael Hofer.
Here.
And also.
Hafer.
Hafer, okay, that's what I asked, thank you.
Okay, so tonight we are here for advice and comment on a large group home at 973 Marlborough Road, TMP number 249-004-000. BCM Environmental Land Law on behalf of applicant Live Free Recovery Services is seeking input from the Planning Board regarding a potential change of use to a large group home. The parcel is in the rural district. Would the applicant like to present?
Good evening, my name's Tara Kessler. I work for BCM Environmental Planning and Land Use Law and I'm a planner paralegal there. I'm joined tonight with Ryan Gagny of Live Free Recovery Services. I just want to thank you for holding a special meeting for us. We really appreciate this timing as we're trying to prepare for our deadline for submission for the June meeting, which is this Friday. So we're here tonight seeking advice and comment for a proposed change of use of the property at 973 Marlborough Road, which is in the rural district. When we submitted our request for advice and comment, our thought was that this would be a large group home based on the use definitions. But after further consideration and review of Keene's different congregate living and social service uses, we think that this proposed use is more closely a residential drug and alcohol treatment facility, which is defined as a licensed facility that provides 24-hour in-house supervision for medical and or non-medical therapeutic care of natural persons seeking rehabilitation from a drug and or alcohol addiction. And this would be a non-medical facility for residents, up to 20 residents. And we'll give a little bit more detail about that proposal. The parcel is currently owned by BTD Properties and Live Free Recovery has a purchase and sales agreement on the property contingent upon receiving the appropriate planning and land use approvals, which is why we're planning to submit for the June meeting for both zoning board and planning board and why we appreciate this meeting so much. The site's partially located in Keene and partly in Marlborough. So there's about 1.1 acres in Keene and 0.96 acres in Marlborough. It's a bit of a unique parcel in that it spans town boundaries. It was, there's an existing building on the property as well as an existing 17-space parking lot that was built for manana log homes in 2003, 2004 timeframe. And it was used as a showroom for log homes and for retail services offices there for the sale of log homes. And the building's actually split by the town boundary, as you can see in this image here. So the property changed ownership and use in 2019 for use as a therapy clinic for youth with autism and developmental disabilities. It was most recently used by Patterns. The building's now vacant and our proposed use is for, as I mentioned, a non-medical residential drug and alcohol treatment facility. So this use is not permitted in the rural district and would require a variance, which we plan to be applying for for the ZBAs June meeting. We understand that if a variance is granted, it would also require a conditional use permit from the Planning Board for a congregate living and social service use. So tonight we're here to give you a brief overview of the proposal, a little bit more information about the site and to get your feedback, some initial thoughts, some potential concerns you might have as they might relate to granting a conditional use permit for the site. So I'm going to turn it over to Ryan Gagny to give a little bit more detail about the proposed use. But before I do, I just want to emphasize that Live Free Recovery is not planning to make any changes to the existing, the outside of the existing building, the parking lot or the exterior of the site. So it would really be a change of use that we're seeking. So Ryan?
Thank you Tara. And thank you again for the special meeting for the purposes of this. It's helpful to have as much information going in on the front end as possible, especially with such a history of kind of a non-conforming use to the property and being into.
Mr. Mayor. I can't hear the.
Can you hear me now? A little bit more.
That's better.
Is that better? Okay. You never know when to, how hard to yell into a microphone. And so just a brief overview for the program itself. As Tara had mentioned, it is a non-medical treatment program. We have various stages of treatment through our continuum of care that address that particular need as far as a medical need. This would be for individuals that are receiving one-to-one in group counseling. Typically a bit more of a bit more of an intimate setting for addressing traumatic paths and, you know, things that may prove to be challenging for the individuals that are there. Individuals wouldn't be leaving the property. It's not some, you know, a location where people would come and go or being employed. They're really getting a solid foundation, getting ready for that stage of their treatment or their journey into their new recovery programs. At this point in time, there'd be very little traffic that takes place during the first shift of the day. There'd be roughly five to seven individuals from a staff perspective that would be there. That's about as much as it could be expected from a traffic standpoint. After that, the staffing pattern would reduce into the second shift. And then the overnight shift, there'd be roughly one to two individuals that were there. As Tara mentioned, there's no, there's not going to be any initial disturbances to the outside of the building itself. There's already a fenced-in perimeter area, almost like a meeting space that's outside. That would remain and there wouldn't be any additional changes to the parking or the coverage of the parking lot itself. There's already plants, planting beds that are there that block some of the view of the parking lot from the road. And ultimately, the program itself, individuals would be there from anywhere from 30 to 45 days, getting ready for their next step in their journey. That's, you know, we'd have, also have weekend coverages while programming runs, seven days a week, 365 days a year, as individuals have needs that come up.
And I'll just add that the site itself, the building, I mentioned that it was used for a log home showroom and retail office, but prior to that, since the 1970s, actually, this has been used for commercial, the site has been used for commercial purposes. So it has a longstanding history of being a commercial site. And that the property is served by the town of Marlborough's municipal sewer service. There is a private well on site. And then Ryan and Live Free Recovery plan to install sprinkler systems in the building and to also install a holding tank, is that right?
Correct.
To ensure that there is adequate water demand or water supply on site for both the domestic or the the use in the building, but also if there was an emergency need, there'd be adequate water supply there. So before, I have, there's one specific CUP standard that I was hoping to get your feedback from tonight. But before I move into that, do you have any questions about the proposed, the proposal that we described or really the proposal that we described?
Any questions or comments?
I think there are a lot of questions, but let's hear the full presentation.
Okay, so we feel looking at Article 15 of the Land Development Code, which is the city's standards for congregate living and social service uses. There are a list of criteria that need to be met to determine whether this proposed use is fitting for the site and the surrounding area. We feel that we meet most of those standards. However, one that we were looking for your feedback on is standard 15.2. C, which states that any parking lots, outdoor activity area or waiting areas associated with the use shall be adequately screened from adjacent properties and from public rights of way. So there's a subjective element to the standard, which is the word adequately screened. And in our opinion, the parking lot that's in front of this building is adequately screened. There is an outdoor activity area, as Ryan mentioned, which is to the east of the building. You can see it over here, it's a fenced-in area, which would be the only space that is used by residents for going outside and taking breaks from their treatment program or for just being, enjoying the outdoors. And I believe that's on a scheduled basis.
Correct.
Yeah. There's a solid six-foot-high fence that runs along the eastern boundary of the site that provides screening from the existing building and the neighbor to the east, which is a residential property. The properties to the south and to the west of this lot are undeveloped. They're large parcels that are primarily densely forested. And then the screening from Route 101, which is Marlborough Road, which is a state highway and from the, there's one single-family home across the street from this lot. The screening that's in place today is mature shrubs and trees that are planted in this grass median that sort of provide some screening between Route 101 and the parking lot in front of the building. The site's also elevated at a higher grade than the roadbed of 101. So there's, that screening is actually sort of sits higher than the road. We feel that this existing landscaping is sufficient, but we're here tonight to hear your thoughts about the screening specifically. We don't think that a solid fence would be a fitting form of screening for this area since it would be creating like a barrier along Route 101 and would be aesthetically unappealing. However, if there's some thoughts about additional landscaping, that's something that our client, that Ryan and Live Free Recovery is is open to installing if, if there is some concern about visibility of the parking lot.
Any questions? Mayor Khan?
Sure, I'll, I'll offer a few. I'm sure there's, but so have you approached the town of Marlborough?
We will be applying for a special exception in the town of Marlborough. As for this intended use, they have less use categories. So group home is the use that would be most fitting for this proposal in Marlborough. And there's no cap on the number of residents for a group home in Marlborough.
Are the abutting residences that you referenced, are they in Marlborough or in Keene?
Well, some are in Marlborough and some are in Keene. The residences.
The one across the street is in Keene and the one to the east is in Marlborough?
I believe both of the residences are in Keene. And the property, the undeveloped parcel to the west and to the south, or the undeveloped parcel to the west is in Keene.
Right. And there's no abutter to the south?
There's, it's, it's an abutter in Marlborough to the south, which is part of the same track to the west, which is this undeveloped forested land.
But there is, so there's, there are three abutters.
There are one, two, three, four, four abutting properties. One to the north, one to the south, one to the east, one to the west.
Of course.
There, but of those properties.
They all occupy.
Only two are occupied with residences. One to the east, which is, you can see that this house is the abutter to the east. Across the street, there's also a single-family home. And those are the two residences that abut.
And the one across the street is in Keene?
I, I'm sorry, I don't have my abutter list in front of me, so I don't want to misspeak. I thought it was in Marlborough, but it might be in Keene.
And the one to the east would be in Marlborough?
It's in Marlborough.
Okay, I mean, I think that's, that's important for us to know. Do we have an abutter issue? To me, anyway. A different question. The occupants, you said, again, just remind me, the number is you're aiming for?
A maximum of 20 residents.
Yes. And any gender restrictions on the occupants?
No.
So it would be a mixed.
Correct.
Is, is your emphasis to try to support people in recovery locally here, like in Keene or in Cheshire County? Do you have any focus or is there just anybody in the state or region that is seeking recovery?
Sure, so probably a large majority end up coming from this particular area. So the Cheshire County and the western part of the state.
I've had the pleasure of visiting the Second Chance, former Second Chance facility at the Cheshire Corrections Institution. And it is a leased facility that Live Free has established, right? You've got 24 residents there?
There's, there's 24, 24 beds for detox, yes.
Yeah. And I mean, I, I think it's, it's well-staffed. It's, it seems like it's a first step for the residents that are there.
That's, yes, that's the medical option for individuals that need to be.
And so is your intent in this facility to support a comparable clientele? Or is it a step-down service?
It would be a step-down. So the, and it's also probably important to note that that, that facility that has nursing and other, you know, clinical staff is probably about 1,000, you know, maybe 1,500 feet away. If you take a right out of the county farm parking lot, it's, it's, you know, that, that this particular site is right there, which also has additional staff to be supported, but this location would be a step down to that. So it would be a lesser, it would be a lesser level of care is what they would call that. And that would mean that that somebody is already stabilized, ready to be at that level of care, to be supported there.
So is it fair to say that they would have completed a detox? The residents of this proposed facility would have completed a detoxification program, which is the type of facility that's at, on the same parcel as the county jail, the Second Chance facility?
And they would be, they would be medically appropriate to be here. They would be somebody that's, they've already been through that process and they are quote-unquote, you know, in a, in a more physically stable place.
So the length of stay at the first facility would be how long?
On average, six days?
Six.
Six days, yeah, the, the initial one that you, that you're referring to. And then this, this afterward would be 30 to 45 days, depending on what the needs are of the individual.
And you would be doing medically assisted treatment?
We, the, some individuals would have access to medications, but from a, from a medical standpoint, that they would be already, they would already be receiving medications.
So it's a non-medical facility?
Oh, sorry, Madam Chair, I just wanted to jump in here really quick. So for tonight, so this is advice and comment and it's really designed to be for non-binding discussion. The actual, I just want to make sure it's clear that there's no actual like approval that would be issued tonight. This still has to go to the zoning board. And then if they get their variance, it would come back to you for a conditional use permit and a full public hearing. So I just wanted to make sure that that was, that was clear.
To, just to quickly answer, the mayor, the, the, the answer would be yes, they have access to medications that they would need to. Is, is if somebody was on diabetes, they would have access to diabetes medication. And if they were on medically assisted treatment, they would have access to those, those same medications that were necessary for that process. So a short answer is yes.
And just one, or about the parking issue. At the other facility, Second Chance facility, residents are not allowed to have vehicles.
Correct.
Is the same standard established here?
Yep. And there's, for, just because you have a point of reference, staffing is, that, that facility is staffed through, you know, multiple, multiple levels of nursing staff on top of operational staff and also tech staff. The staffing patterns for the step-down program that we're talking about here, the staffing pattern is far less than that because it doesn't have a medical component to it. So you don't, you don't have the staffing ratio that I, that we have for nurses there in particular. So you have, per, per so many clients, you have so many, you know, RNs and nurses that are on. We don't have that issue here where this is very, very much clinical focused. Somebody's already stable for that portion.
And so relative to the staff's guidance here.
Sure.
Your, one of your major questions is the screening.
Yes.
Right? And so why, why do you think that screening would be a valuable aspect to the property?
Well, we think the, the property is adequately screened as it is today. But the city's land development code has certain standards for congregate living and social service uses. And one of them is a requirement that outdoor activity areas and parking areas are adequately screened from abutting properties and from the public right of way. I think we, I think it's clear that the property is adequately screened from the properties to the east as there's a solid fence that, that screens the entire length of the property. It's screened to the west and to the south in that there's a dense forest that goes for thousands of feet before you reach the development. Our question of the board tonight was whether you feel, and I understand this is a non-binding session, but your thoughts on whether the screening at the front of the building, which screens the parking lot, is adequate? I will note some history, this property, when it was built, or when the building and parking lot were built in 2003, it went through the zoning process for use variance. It also went through a site plan review. And at the time, the parking wasn't allowed to be in the front of the building. So a waiver was received from the planning board and a requirement was that this landscaping go in to screen that parking area. So at that time, it was considered adequate for that use. This is a new use and there are new standards. So we just wanted to check in and see your thoughts before we submit our application.
And this is the view from 101 as people are driving past.
Yes, the state highway.
Abutting across the street.
That's right.
Yep.
Ryan?
Thank you. So from my perspective, I think increasing the screening would bring more attention to the facility. So, but I have a question about the sign, is that permitted? Are signs permitted in the rural zone? If not, is there a variance for that already?
So the sign code, I'm not very familiar with it, so I can't answer your question right now. But they'd have to apply for a sign permit and it would go through a sort of like a separate process than the site, or the, yeah, site plan and CUP process.
And depending on, we've, depending on what that, the sign looks like, we would most likely just go over with what's already there without having to change it. I wouldn't be looking to, you know, it's, it's actually a nice, it complements the building nicely. And I don't, as much as I don't have to change, I would appreciate not changing it. It's, it's, you know, when you look at the property itself, it's a, it's a, it's a beautiful property. And I think that this actually complements it, so to not change it would be beneficial.
Yes.
Thank you. I had, I had a question, this was a retail building originally when it was built to sell log homes, it sounded like, I didn't know that. And it's really a nice-looking building. But you're not going to have a lot of visitors and the, the people living there won't have cars. So I'm wondering, kind of tied to the landscaping and not to add expense, but something to think about. Maybe some of that parking could be reverted back to, you know, grass? And that way there'd be less to screen and also, you don't need it all. It would also help with runoff and stormwater and all that good stuff. So just a thought, if, because I don't think, unless you do need all that parking, I don't know. But it's something to think about, just, I think, can't say you have to do it, sure thought, so.
I will note the required amount of parking for this use, if it were 20 residents, is 10 parking spaces on site. So we, we could, we talked about on our, on our plan that we share for the CUP, being clear about where the parking area is to be right behind the existing screening. And the parking sort of spans the length of the front of the building, which is a long building. But we were thinking about concentrating those 10, those 10 required spaces at least behind the, the screened area. And maybe in the future, I know the plan right now is not, we're in the midst of.
I understand.
Yeah.
Not asking you to spend money, I just something to think about, because I would make it even nicer than it is, so. And to, I guess I'll have to drive by it again, I drive by it all the time, but just to see what the landscaping looks like.
Yeah.
Yeah, with this question in mind.
And I believe it's okay to park on the site. It could be, I don't want to misspeak, Ryan, but since it is under contract right now. You could park in the parking area, so look at the outside of the site.
I'll just offer that I do drive by this property every day and I've never noticed a lack of screening, I guess. I've always thought that it's, it's a very beautiful property, you know, and I'm happy to hear that this is considered use. And I think that the, the screening right now is adequate. I'll just offer that as an.
Thank you.
Is the screening requirements for this use different than if it returned to a retail use? Is there a difference?
There's a higher standard than.
Higher standard.
Well, the, the Planning Board has development standards that include screening of parking areas. But in the rural district, there isn't the same standard for other uses that aren't congregate living, social service uses. I could, and I'll turn to staff to correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, this really goes back to, because this standard is in zoning that says this has to be adequately screened. Really, the reason for being here tonight is if the board felt strongly that no what exists there today isn't adequate screening and exist, and more landscaping wouldn't be sufficient, then they would actually have to request a variance. So that's why they're here tonight, to make sure that they don't need to go request an additional variance to the one that they're already going to be requesting. If that makes sense. So yeah, this is a higher standard just because it's in zoning. With the typical planning board landscaping standards, they can be waived through a waiver process with the planning board. So that's kind of the difference here.
I just have a quick question about use, like a lot of your patients smoke cigarettes and whatnot, is there a dedicated area?
There would be, correct, there would be. It would be within that, that, what's already dedicated there, that's already outlined with the fence.
It would be behind a fence.
It's already behind, there's already a fence, so you, you see the, what looks like there was some type of requirement that was once there, which is, is that there's a six-foot solid fence that's there. And then within that fence, there's another fence that's relatively the same height, but it's at a higher grade. So the, the fence that, there's a slight, maybe about a two-foot difference in, in grade. And right at the top of that is where the secondary fence sits. And that also is, is fenced in the area that we were describing as far as, as an outdoor area. So there's.
Do you monitor, make sure that they're within that area when?
Oh, yes, yes.
Because I noticed with a walk-through of our shelter in town here, they turned the parking lot into a smoking area. So I just.
Yeah.
I don't really.
Yeah, so it's, you know, we, there's, to not go too far, there's, we have several locations and there's always a designated smoking area. And we're, you know, with, within a certain, you know, kind of a certain distance of where the, where the entrance or exit is to it, for, for obvious reasons, less, less road traveled. And there's also, they're also monitored with, individuals are monitored with staff as well.
Yeah, that would be my only concern, that something like that would be, say, behind a fence or screened. But other than that, I think the location's a good location for them.
And if there was an issue around a smoke, like we've, we've had other accommodations that we may do to neighbors, you know, if somebody was sensitive to smoking and there's, there's still an entire back porch that's there that is separate on the opposite side, that is, that can't really be seen by the road and can't, it doesn't have access from the ground up to it, it has to be accessible through the building. So if there was ever an issue and that was, it's something that we could very easily navigate as far as a reasonable accommodation to a neighbor or anything that was a problem.
Are these patients free to?
Are these patients free to roam the property, or?
No, no, there's, there's a schedule that's in place. There's, there's, there's times where there's, there's monitored downtime, but there's also portions where, like, kind of off-site activities will take place as far, because sometimes having the curriculum that we have built out that already exists in other locations is that we would, we would do the same thing here.
Yeah, your other locations seem to.
Yes.
Go pretty smoothly.
We try our best. Yeah, it's not the easiest thing in the world.
I'm sure.
Yeah.
Any other questions from?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Jay.
The, will you have a bus on the site so that if, to take residents to and fro, so that there, it's not like they are landlocked?
Correct. Yeah, we, so if, what we, we have an internal policy, which is called client needs, and sometimes there are things, somebody has to go to a doctor's appointment, you know, emergency dentist appointment, you know, so on and so forth, and we have transportation just like we do at all of our other sites for that reason.
I think it's also important to note that these residents would be willingly admitted, and they can be discharged at any time at their will.
Correct.
Any further discussion, comments? Anyone? Okay. So at this point, I guess this would conclude this meeting, or, and I think we would adjourn.